This year, actually, though, the state of Ohio has agreed to, they have given us, I'm sorry, this distracted me. They decided to fund us for students who qualify for reduced-priced meals. They are now eligible for free meals, so they get meals at no cost. So the state is reimbursing us for the 30 cents it would be for breakfast and the 40 cents for lunch. So what that means is essentially any student who would have qualified for reduced meals gets free meals this year. We do not receive any funding from the District General Fund. We are a standalone budget and department. Just some eligibility data. Our free and reduced percentage is about 23% of our students. So our full pay, which means our students who do not qualify for free reduced meals makes up about 77%. We are a very low property district, so we do rely heavily on meal and à la carte sales. And new this year, the USDA has decided to allow any students who qualify for Medicaid to also qualify for free and reduced-priced meals. So in the past, typically only students who qualify for SNAP or considered food stamps, OWF, and then based on income would qualify. But this year, now, any of our students who qualify for Medicaid also are eligible for free and reduced-priced meals. So that has helped a lot of our families this year. So just our budget at a glance. Much like our District General Fund, salaries and benefits make up the majority of where our expenses go per year. However, the last several years, our food cost has been creeping up to be about what we spend in salary and benefits. So we have, our food costs have gone up about 30% in the last three years. I'm sure you all witnessed it at the grocery store. So we are not any different from that. Our food, we are definitely accruing those food costs, too. So just a brief overview of the nutrition standards that we have to follow for breakfast and lunch meals. Unfortunately, we can't serve whatever we would like. I'm sure our students would really enjoy that if we could serve whatever we wanted. But in addition to meeting calorie, fat, and sodium regulations, we also have to meet weekly and daily grain, protein, fruit, and vegetable subgroup standards, as well as fluid milk standards. So this is kind of just the briefest overview or the most basic overview of what each of our meals has to abide by to meet the standards so that we are able to get federal and state reimbursement. So what makes a meal? This is essentially an overview of all the options that make up a full meal. We do encourage our students to take all of these options that are available to them. However, we do operate offer versus serve. So we allow the students to choose what they want to put on their tray versus us just automatically serving whatever is on the line that day. Research shows that if students have a choice, that they're more likely to eat what they've chosen rather than what has just been put on their tray without their, without their choice. So allergies and special diets. We actually have 776 kids who require a special diet based on allergies or other medical conditions. We train our staff several times a year on allergies and avoiding cross-contamination. We do strive to serve healthy meals for all of our students. So regardless of allergies or special diets, we try to be an inclusive environment for all of our kids. So just some tidbits that I thought would be helpful for you all to know. Our meal counts are actually up about 20% from pre-pandemic numbers. So after all the free meals were finished, we don't really count that data because that's a little bit skewed. From prior to when all students were eligible for free meals, we are up about 20% from the numbers prior to that. So that's definitely something we are happy about. I think possibly because students had the option to eat with us. They may, some students who maybe wouldn't have in the past did decide to eat with us, and we've retained their, retained them. So we've also implemented additional menu items based on surveys and student requests. Again, if students have a say in what they're eating, they're definitely more likely to eat it and to eat with us. So that's been something that I think has helped with that number as well. And we are continuously searching for menu items that the students will like and that will invite, provide an inclusive environment for our students with allergies and dietary restrictions as well. Any questions? Okay.
Only question would be, you know, we see a lot on the news about students or that their bills aren't paid, and they're, they're getting, how do we handle that?
So we have charge policies essentially at each school, but we, we don't typically try not to deny a student a meal. If they do have a balance, we don't typically let them purchase à la carte items, but they will be afforded a meal every day.
Okay. Does, do we have a program where at the end of the year that if they owe something or it's not paid, or how do we handle that?
Yes, we do. We make sure that those fees are taken care of, and so it's not a burden to the family.
Right, okay. Great, thanks very much. Great, great presentation.
Thank you.
All righty, next on the agenda is public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. I, at each board meeting, with which public presentation is permitted, shall administer the following rules. The portion of the meeting for participation of public shall be limited to 30 minutes. Attendees must register their intentions to participate on a sign-up sheet 30 minutes prior to each meeting. Individuals may not register other speakers to speak, and the participant may speak more than once. Participants must first be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name and whether the participant is a resident or non-resident, and if appropriate, their group affiliation. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes or less. The board will listen to all who speak, but generally do not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Matters that require follow-up will be directed to the superintendent. Having the list, Devin Barry.
Good evening. Devin Barry, 1954 Steppingstone Court. Want to speak very briefly. I'm the father of two that attend our schools. I've been living in the community for about 15 years, and I wanted to take a brief moment to commend our board, our principals, our teachers, and many of the staff that we have in Centerville Schools. My students are thriving. They've had a lot of success in the school district, and that is the reason 15 years ago, we decided to move here. So I wanted to say that I will be supporting issue 13, and I want to keep the resources that we have intact and make sure that each of our students has the opportunity to receive the education that my students receive. My, sorry, said my students, my kids. I am an educator, and my wife is an educator as well. Both of us are educators in neighboring school districts for the past 26, 26 years. Thank you again.
Carol. This is Carol Cannard.
Hi, thanks. I'm Carol Cannard. I'm the, well, I live at 9707 Minotar Way, so I am a resident. I'm the retired director of the Centerville, Washington Park District, and tonight I come as a representative of the Yes for Parks Committee. I'd like to share some information about the park district and the levy that's on the ballot this November. Centerville, Washington Park District was founded in 1959 and is a separate government entity from the city of Centerville, Washington Township, and Five Rivers Metro Parks. They are governed by a three-member Board of Park Commissioners and manage 51 parks throughout Centerville and Washington Township. The parks have amenities for all ages and interests, including athletic fields, paved and hiking trails, playgrounds, spray ground, and lots more. The Park District mission is to deliver fun, healthy, outstanding park experiences that connect the community to the outdoors. They maintain parklands to the highest standards for their use, active or passive, natural or manicured, and follow carefully developed master plans for best habitat preservation and reduced environmental impact. The Park District organizes over 700 programs each year with more than 20,000 participants in those programs. The primary source of revenue is through property tax levies provided by Centerville and Washington Township residents. And they will be on the ballot as issue 19 on November 7th, asking voters to replace a 0.9-mill levy with a 1-mill levy. The existing 0.9-mill levy was originally voted in in 2004 and was renewed by voters in 2014, still calculated at the 2004 assessed home values. It's always the year in which it's voted in. The 1-mill levy will be based on assessed property values in 2023, which is before the revaluations go into place. It will generate approximately $2 million in annual revenue or one-third of the day-to-day operational costs. And homeowners would pay an additional $35 per year per $100,000 of current home value. Usage of the funds over the next 10 years will include taking care of what we have and implementing requested improvements. So if you would like to get involved, please visit yesforcwparks.com, where you can sign up to volunteer, get a yard sign, or even show your support through a donation. Please follow us on social media, too, and help spread the word. We hope you will vote yes for issue 19 on November 7th to continue the great parks that make our community unique and a special place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, thanks for your years of service as director of the park. All right, thank you. Carla.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Carlin Epper. I'm a resident. I live at 6532 Senator Lane, and I am a parent to two third graders in John Hole here in the district. And I'm just here to kind of share a little bit about why I'm supporting the levy and how excited I am to support that levy. We moved here specifically in 2020, actually specifically for Centerville Schools. We were about two miles next door to my house and moved next door because of the opportunities we have here in this school district. I grew up in a much smaller town where we had a good school, but the opportunities available here to my kids are just amazing to me. So I truly appreciate what the schools do. I appreciate every experience my kids have had with their teachers, with the administration. It's been wonderful. So I just wanted to share my support to thank the board and the administration for everything that you're doing and just say that I'm excited to vote yes this coming November.
Thank you. Dan, Stacy.
Hello. My name is Dan Stacy. Tonight, I would like to address the school board and the community regarding the upcoming levy. I taught engineering at Centerville High School for 21 years before retiring this year. Prior to that, I worked 25 years in various manufacturing, engineering-related positions in industry. I think most will agree that providing a variety of learning options for students does contribute to make, making great schools. Education is definitely not a one-size-fits-all when addressing students' various learning interests and styles. One of those options at Centerville High School is career and technical education. There are currently 450 students in 12 very diverse programs within career ed. These 12 programs lend themselves to students who desire blending academics with application-based learning. More specifically, students in the engineering program apply STEM concepts, science, technology, engineering, and math to solve real-world problems. Not only do they learn STEM-related hard skills, they learn the importance of soft skills, such as critical thinking, teamwork and collaboration, problem solving, and so on. Students that have been in these programs typically graduate with a great sense of fulfillment and accomplishment. If you were to tour the engineering lab here at the high school, you would see numerous trophies and awards that students have won over the years in various state and local competitions. Most recently, the engineering students won six out of seven awards in last year's Extreme Robot Event. Students can also earn college credits through the yearly web exam test that most career ed programs do administer. Again, like several other career ed programs, many engineering students have held internships throughout the Miami Valley, allowing students to see their classroom content applied in the real world. Most business owners view these internships as their investment in our young people's future. I receive feedback yearly through notes and visits from former students every, every year about the value and experience the engineering program has provided them. Several University of Cincinnati students have shared that they were able to acquire co-op jobs more easily and are much better prepared for their college engineering classes. I am confident that other program instructors will tell you the same about the feedback from their former students. Regarding students and other career ed programs, if you were to observe environmental science students analyzing water quality and soil content, culinary arts and restaurant management students preparing and serving food to teachers in their own Elk Cafe, and students programming in the information technology class, you would witness the passion these students have for their respective programs. Let's continue to provide students the opportunities that career and technical education has to offer. Voting yes for the levy is a great investment in the students and their futures. And you can learn more about these career ed programs on the Centerville City Schools, excuse me, website or by calling Centerville High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tiffany.
Good evening. Tiffany Elder, a parent of two students here at Centerville City Schools. I live at 7640 Stanley Mill Drive. I just wanted to come up and show my support for issue 13. And, you know, it means a lot for, I went to a different school district, and being here with both of my kids, I have a fourth grader and a first grader. And my fourth grader has Level 1 autism, and he's ADHD. What Centerville has shown they do for the students who potentially have something that not a normal student would have at a different school district, they wouldn't put them in a normal classroom. And Centerville does that. It makes my child feel like he's welcome and he's in a normal environment. And the teachers do a wonderful job here with assisting every student in every need that they have. And I think that's something great that you guys are striving to do. And issue 13 would help with that, with not having to have cuts in student or teachers and making classrooms bigger because there aren't enough teachers and assistants with the aides that are coming in. So I just think it's, Centerville is a great school district to be in, and I fully support giving you guys the extra funds that are needed.
Thank you very much. Mike.
Good evening. My name is Mike Larson. I'm a resident of Washington Township. I represent local taxpayers. I wanted to share my concern with you on the, on the process used to determine an additional school tax levy was necessary. I don't feel you considered all options before endorsing the superintendent's and treasurer's recommended tax levy. Property owners fund our school district. It represents a large portion of our taxes. I have provided you a copy of my property taxes paid for the school district in 2022 compared to 2002. 53% of my property taxes are for school district levies. In the past 20 years, my school property taxes have increased 93%. I realize also, this also reflects an increase in my property value. However, I have four additional school levies to pay on top of the increasing millage. My reason for sharing this with you is that the current rate of taxation by the school district is unsustainable. At no time while considering the new tax levy did the school district consider budget cuts. All businesses and families have to look at cutting costs when their expenses are getting higher. Why should the school district be any different? Earlier this year, Mr. Westney indicated that he and the budgeting team looked at, very hard at the budget to see where cuts could be made. Did the school district ask for a copy of the budgets the school district looked at? Did you ask to see the cost reduction options the school district considered? I realize the school district's main budget item is personnel. However, positions cuts should be an option. Many companies have had to make staff reductions recently due to high inflation rates. Our school district should do the same. Forcing taxpayers to absorb an exponential increase in taxes for the foreseeable future should not be the default option for the school board. Instead of looking at staff cuts, our school district is adding staff. Recently, the school district added a new administrator position, the new Director of Special Education. The school district also added a new middle school vice principal position. Those are the only positions I am aware of. Both of these positions require a salary over $100,000 each. If the superintendent looked hard at the budget for cost reductions and could not find any area to cut, how can he find funding for new administrative positions? Prior to the school levy vote, the school board repeatedly shared their concern that state funding levels will, will decrease. This is one of the primary reasons given for the need for the tax levy. In fact, the school board and our treasurer felt that our state representative was misleading citizens that state funding would increase, would, would increase. However, when I contacted our state representative about this issue, he had the State Legislative Service Commission conduct research on future state funding for Centerville School District. He was not misleading. State funding levels will be increasing for our school district. He shared data with me on how the state funding, again, our tax money, will be increasing for our school district. He did not share his opinion or try to discredit the school board. Instead of allowing our school leadership to increase budgets unchecked and blame our state funding process, please hold our school leadership accountable for the tax dollars we provide them. Citizens elected you to oversee the school district. This does not provide them a blank check every four years with a new, with a new levy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, is it Kim? Kim.
My name is Kim Swartz, and I am a resident. First, I am so thrilled that we're such a part of a, a board meeting that everybody can just speak, you know, honestly and anything that we want to say, so. Definitely thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I recently heard that there is a new levy on the upcoming November ballot. I was interested in learning how much of my current annual property tax went to Centerville City Schools. A simple search on mcreealestate.com under the levy distribution tab provided the information. I was shocked, I still am shocked, to find out that 57% of my property taxes are going to Centerville City Schools. To put this in perspective, fire and EMS services is only 9%, and the park district is only 3%. So let's see if you know what these years have in common. 1976, 1981, 1985, 1989, 1998, another 1998, 2000, 2005, another 2005, 2009, 2013, 2019, and another 2019. There are all the years in which a bond or levy was passed that the property owners are still paying annual property taxes. That's a total of 13, with the majority being permanent. I searched the school website for additional information on the levy, and the frequently asked questions, there's a brief explanation of effective millage in which only two levies are listed. I asked the board for greater transparency to please include all 13 levies in the FAQ section. I believe the taxpayers need to know that permanent is permanent. Voters need to be informed. We are still paying on something voters passed in 1976. I am paying for something that was passed before I was even born. Now, put that in perspective. In the future, please consider a five- or 10-year levy, you know, something that we can vote on over and over instead of a permanent or continuing. Lastly, I challenge our educators to develop a program that our high school students can create cost savings projects. We have a very innovative student body that I'm sure could propose sustainable initiatives for reducing costs in supplies and utilities. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for your dedication to our students.
Thank you. All righty, that's all the speakers that were requested to speak tonight. Next, Board Administrative Reports. The legislative report, Mrs. Sparks.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. The State Board of Education news. Several members of the State Board of Education are suing to halt the transition of power from SPOE, the newly created Department of Education and Workforce Do. This is something that we've talked about a lot in the last few months. Citing that the provision in House Bill 33 violates the state constitution, a Franklin County common police judge issued a temporary restraining order on Thursday preventing the state from moving forward with implementing of due. A hearing is scheduled for October 2nd. And then a new bill was introduced, House Bill 279, which will require occupants, oh, I'm sorry, will require occupant restraining devices to install in all school buses within the next five years. I'm also getting a lot of stuff on the federal level. If no one on the board has any objection, I'd like to start maybe adding a little bit of that into my report each month, too, if that's okay with everyone. That's the end of this report, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Student reps? Yay.
Good evening, guys. I'm Thomas Garcia, and I'm a senior at Centerville High School.
I'm Ashida Mantri. I'm also a senior at Centerville High School.
I'm Samaria Williams, and I'm a junior at Centerville High School.
Today, we're going to talk about our candy and comment session at the high school that we conducted a couple of weeks ago. So a couple of weeks ago, all of us sat down at fourth and fifth lunch in the back of Central at the high school to gather input on what students liked, disliked about the high school in general in general. And in exchange, we were able to give them candy for their comments. So after gathering all this input, all of us, including Kate, who's our other student board rep, who is unable to be here tonight, sat down in a meeting with Mrs. Sparks, Mr. Schroer, and Mr. Carroll, the coordinating principal. We discussed like what we, what input we gathered from us, and we will do some changes about this research that Ashida will be talking about in a moment. And this is our first candy and comment session of the year. We hope to continue doing a couple more of these at the high school and middle schools and other schools around the district as well.
So one of the biggest concerns raised by the students at our school is the parking lot situation. A lot of them seem to be upset about the new cones that were put in so that students can't exit and have to follow the rules that are already labeled by the arrows in the parking lot. So we spoke to Mr. Carroll, Ms. Sparks, and Mr. Schroer about this, and it's, there's nothing really that we can do. The policy or the changes were put in place to make sure that students are following the rules. So just because the students aren't happy following those rules, that's not something that can be changed. It's just something that needs to be forced. I also know that I think requiring some new land or property and going to be able to change the parking lot situation next year. So Mr. Carroll mentioned it wouldn't be cost-effective for him to change up the arrows or change up the way our parking lot is set up so that the students are more fulfilled with their parking experience. Another problem was the air conditioning at the school, which is also not something that we can really solve. But yeah, it's just those two factors.
Is the air conditioning not working, or is it too cold? Is it too hot?
We've had complaints about it being too cold in classrooms sometimes. And when the air conditioning does sometimes go out, I think one day, these past couple, these past couple of weeks it did. It has been hot in the school, but I don't know if we have much control over that besides utilities being solved by utilities, so, yeah.
Thanks. Next, Mrs. Sauber, Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I want to give you an update tonight and talk a little bit about our fiscal year '24 financial plan. We did review this last week at the work session, but I wanted to give another overview tonight. Levy cycles and, and when we need to be back on the ballot and why. And then also give you just a reminder about the Centerville levy FAQs. So to start off, let's talk first about fiscal year '24. We're already two months into that fiscal year, but I want to review that plan with you. Some of the highlights and key assumptions for the plan is the property reappraisal, which we've talked a lot about over the last couple of months. And I'm going to show you the numbers here in a minute, but I want to make sure to note that we, one of the things that I stressed last month in the presentation was that we would see an increase in revenue from inside millage. And we've been factoring that into our numbers for at least a year or longer because we knew that reappraisal time was coming. Also, state funding. We did see a slight increase for fiscal year '24 and '25, and those ODE assumptions are still simulations at this point because they haven't started funding us according to the model. And that is supposed to happen in October. funding us according to the model, and that is supposed to happen in October, but we have worked those simulations into the plan. A reminder that this is our final year of ESER funding. We have some positions that we've been paying wages and benefits, or wages out of the ESER funds, so those expenses will be coming back into the general fund starting in fiscal year '25. That doesn't impact '24, it's for '25. And then I want to stress and kind of go over the deficit spending and just to point out here, we did deficit spend in fiscal year '23 by $1.2 million.
Before you go in, just back.
Yep.
Sorry. State funding, the increase, do you have an idea of the dollars and percentage that were actually going up?
Yeah, yes. For fiscal year '24, it's about $730,000, which, when I had done the percentage on that, it's about .65% increase in total revenue.
Point 65%?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's an additional $500,000 for fiscal year '25.
Which is less than .65%.
It is. I didn't calculate that one, but yes.
So nowhere near a cost of living, nowhere near that, I mean, not that we don't mind the extra money.
That's correct.
But just to point out, since it was stated that we're actually getting more money from the state, this is not a significant increase in terms of our overall budget and what they give, .6, .5%? Okay.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure.
And we did talk about that in July, and I remember saying, we do appreciate every dollar.
Absolutely.
Every dollar that we can get, and so we're thankful for that.
Right.
But, but yes, from a percentage standpoint, it's not keeping up with the increase in our budget.
Right.
So to look at a few of the numbers, this is the revenue. I left '23 on there so that we have a little bit of context. We collected almost $114 million last year, and that is increasing for '24 and '25. And to point to a few of those pieces, I talked about the reappraisal and the fact that we're going to collect additional revenue for inside millage. So you can see that for '23, we collected about $87.6 million in '23 for taxes. The reappraisal hits part of '24 and then all, it's fully impacted in '25. Remember, tax year versus fiscal year are, it's calendar year versus fiscal year, so that's the difference. But if you look in '25, you'll see that we're anticipating $91.2 million in revenue. That's about $3.4 million, and that is the increase that I anticipate that we'll have for inside millage. State funding, you can see here with the arrows, we were at about $14 million last year, 14.7 for next, or for this current year, and then 15.3 in 2025. So I wanted to make sure to point out that, that we are anticipating some increased revenue. We have that built into our projections. This will all translate over into the five-year forecast that's submitted in November. Percentage-wise, changeover from, from the previous year, 1.6% increase in '23, it's 1.45% in '24, and about a 2.3% increase in '25. So I like to point those out because we'll see some of the increases here in the expenses on the next slide.
And most of that 2.3% in '25 is from property tax, inside property.
Yes, the inside millage.
Not from, not from the state giving us, because they're only giving us .5 that year. Okay, just want to make sure.
Expenses for fiscal year '24, we spent $115 million in '23, and we're anticipating that to be $119.6 in '24, and then increasing by about 3 to 3.5, 3.5%, almost 4% in, in the future years. As we've talked about so many times, as we've talked about finance over the years, for several years, we're about 89 to 90% wages and benefits as a percent of our total expenses out of our general fund. You're going to see different numbers across district, neighboring districts, Centerville, Beaver Creek, and Kettering, they're all going to be different because it's really dependent upon grant funding that they might receive, also permanent improvement funds. That, that's a big piece of why our percentage is 90% or close to 90% is because we do have a permanent improvement fund that takes care of a lot of our capital, the majority of our capital improvements out of the permanent improvement fund, which is not included here. The example I like to use there is many districts have to buy buses out of their general fund. We don't do that. We do that out of our permanent improvement fund, and so that changes that percentage of, of wages and benefits. So how are we operating in terms of a surplus? Are we operating at a surplus, or are we operating at a deficit? And I mentioned for fiscal year '23, we deficit spend by $1.2 million. Once that trend happens, it, that, that debt or that deficit from one year to the next builds. That's not cash balance, that is, are we, are we, do we have a balanced budget, or are we spending more than what we're bringing in? And we've entered that timeframe where we're starting to spend more than what we're bringing in. The green line there is our cash balance, and you can see the percentage of cash to total expenses is starting to decrease quite, very quickly as we deficit spend more. And just to highlight that deficit spending piece, this, this is the, the data line that I look at, that we have to address right away, because again, that, that debt or that deficit, it builds and grows because the expenses continue to increase while the revenue stays relatively flat. Now, we do, like I said, we, we have factored in the reappraisal piece. The county auditor said that, that on average across the entire county, residents would see a 4% to 6% increase. That was in my presentation last week. We have that built into our financial plan, and we're still deficit spending. Any questions on that before I move on to talk a little bit about levy cycles? So just one slide here, we have this updated with '23 actual, and these percentages are a percentage of cash to total budget. And so you can see the green arrows is where new levies were passed over, over the years, dating all the way back to, it looks like about 2005. As that cash percentage starts to deplete, or as we're deficit spending, that's, that is the, the metric that we use to have to put a levy back on the ballot. So 2019 was the last additional money that we requested from the voters. We had a couple of years where we, we were able to operate at a surplus and that cash balance increased, and you can see that in '21 and '22, but then the deficit spending that I just showed you on the previous slides starts to eat away at that cash balance. And, and this conversation is what has led us up to several months of, of preparing, making recommendations to you to be on the ballot, the resolutions that we passed over the summer, which brings me finally tonight to talk a little bit about the levy that we have on the ballot. So first, I just want to mention, as a disclaimer, that the information being presented here is merely factual. District personnel are not allowed to advocate for or against the passage of a levy during times in which they're being compensated. So we have on the ballot for November 7th, 2023, a combination levy. We do have an issue number, we didn't have that last month when I presented to you, we're issue 13. The combination levy is a $5.4 million, or, excuse me, a 5.4 mil operating expense levy combined with a point, 0.5 mil for permanent improvement expenses. The levy will generate $12.9 million per year in additional revenue, and that's broken down into $11.8 million for day-to-day operations and $1.1 million for permanent improvements. The cost of the levy is $17 per month, per $100, per $100,000 of home value as appraised by the county auditor. One of the questions that, that we have been working to try to address that we hear a lot is why do school districts continue to ask for additional funding or for more funding? And that's primarily because of House Bill 920. Again, we covered this extensively last month. That information is available through the recording of our meeting from last month, so I'm not going to get into all those details again. But House Bill 920 basically freezes the dollar amount that the district receives from voted levies. So as our expenses go up, the levy doesn't keep up with it, with that inflation. The Montgomery County Auditor has certified issue 13 to generate $12.9 million. It will only generate $12.9 million. So even with the reappraisal, it will immediately be rolled back, the effective rate will be rolled back, so that the levy would only generate $12.9 million. So just wanted to make sure that we clarified that this evening. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Okay.
So if you go back to the chart, it has one, and we had ballots, or had levy number ballots. Just take the last one we had in 2019. Very next year, there was a decrease. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
So some people don't appreciate the fact that when we pass a levy, we don't get the full amount of that levy in that fiscal year. So when we passed it in November 2019, first half of the fiscal year going from, it starts in July, until six months from then, we're not collecting anything.
That's, that's correct, of 2019, of 2019, yes.
We're beginning to have a year collecting that year, so that's why the dramatic decrease over what we had previous year. And then, of course, the next fiscal year, we did a full year of that.
That's right.
That's important to keep in mind. Also, we know, and we hear a lot about inside millage. Was the inside millage, whenever it was put in, I believe it was back in the 70s, but whenever it was put in, who voted to include that in our property transactions? What group of people?
That would be at the state level.
The state level. The state had passed inside millage, and so every district in Ohio had some form of inside millage. It's not voted on by citizens of our community. Only get, our state's only get to vote on what we're going to do for the local community.
That, that's, that's correct. 10, 10 mils, every, every taxpayer pays 10 mils. The district, we don't receive that many mils. It's broken out between the school district, the county, and like the township or the city, it's an allocation, and that's different in every community. But it's, but it's a 10 mil piece of the law that, that every taxpayer pays.
It's based on the property values at, at the current time.
Currently.
It goes up, when property values go up, and we have no control over it.
That's correct. Same happens if property values go down. That, it goes down then as well. It's directly proportionate with what happens to values.
While you're thinking of that, I'll ask one, Lisa. So a levy passed in 1973 would be generating, let's say it was a 5 mil, and it generated $500,000 back in '73, and it's permanent. How much money would that generate today?
$500,000.
Exactly. So people need to understand that what we passed at that point, that is permanent, it never goes up, even though your property's value up, the, you know, the cost of living goes up, everything goes up, so that never changes. So we don't, I don't want people thinking that if we pass it back in '73, every year we're getting more and more and more, and it's just piling up. Whenever you pass that, even your property value go up, your taxes go up, that stays the same no matter what, and that's part of that inside millage where it doesn't change.
That's, that's correct. Our revenue stays the same.
Stays the same from that. So every, every time we pass one, it's based on that year period and stays that way permanently.
Yes.
Dave covered whatever you have to add.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, district update.
So good evening. I just wanted to really take the opportunity to follow up on some of Laura Silver's conversation this evening, and just really provide the board and the community some information in regards to the 5.9 mil levy and what that levy will be used for in November. So over the last several weeks, I've attended a lot of events, community events for our students, and just different activities in the community where I've been asked that same question, is why the additional 5.9 mils? And I hope to answer those questions tonight to let everyone know how that money will be used moving forward. I think it's important, though, for us to understand, or the public to understand, it's all part of our strategic plan that was developed a couple of years ago, as you're aware. We took about two years to work on the strategic plan, which we really stressed and worked on our mission, vision, and core principles. The plan has a five focus areas of concentrating on teaching and learning, leading and innovating, diversifying and including, communicating, understanding, and resourcing and supporting. We had about 400 community members come together to help with the plan, work with our teachers and administrators in developing the plan. A portion of the plan was also part of the portrait of an elk that we'll talk about here in a few minutes as well. But these committees came together to work on looking at the plans for the district and how we wanted to move forward and sustain our progress moving forward. In addition to that, with the 5.9 mil, Laura did a nice job by talking about the 5.4 for operating expenses and the 0.5 for permanent improvement funds. We put together a facilities committee to help look at some of our facility projects and our facility needs, to look at those areas to move forward. I want to mention the state report card, and I'll, I'll be very brief because our curriculum team will be up here this evening to talk about the report card. Obviously, we're proud of our five stars, but this gives us an opportunity, not only as administrators, but as a district, our parents and our families, to look at where we're doing well, where we have success in our buildings, and areas that we need to improve moving on into the future. So in addition, I mentioned, curriculum will talk in more detail tonight about the report card, but it's also important to notice that our schools are rated A+ by niche.com, which is Lifestyle's website, which connects students and families with schools. And I know most of you are familiar with the 2023 U.S. News rating that we received for Centerville High School being in the top 10%. So obviously, good things are happening across the district. So moving forward, the additional funding would be used by the district to sustain operations and in keeping the district moving forward, to help provide additional programs that meet the needs of all students. This includes academic and social-emotional programs as required by the state, includes programming for nearly 30% of our students who are identified as gifted, and 13% of those students who have special needs, and over 400-plus English language learners to provide programs for all students across the district. Additional funding will be used to not only sustain, but also maintain operations that we have in place, meaning the overall health and wellness and safety of our students by providing additional staff and counseling where needed. We have 22 counselors across the district. We have added two of those counselors this year. One of those positions was at Watts Middle School, which we had one counselor serving over 700 students in that building. We felt like that was a need to make sure that we provided that additional support for the students there. In addition, we have five school resource officers, three with the city of Centerville Police Department, and two from the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department that work and continue to work for us in our building. So again, it's not only sustaining, but also maintaining the program that we have in place. Additional funding to continue, to prepare, preparing students for rapidly changing world by developing adaptability, communication, critical thinking, empathy, and tech literacy skills. And this is really the, the portion of the portrait of a graduate that we've talked a lot about over the last few months here in our meetings. We had a committee of about 80 students, staff, and parents come together to work on those five competencies. The program we are using to help drive decisions about what type of programming and experiences that we need to offer for our students moving forward. So the portrait of the elk is really working for us as a guide to help us to implement all parts of our strategic plan. Continue with the theme in moving forward, an additional funding expanding college and career pathways to support and build workforce. Our comprehensive high school offers a variety of, of programming. We have 220 regular classroom and special education program courses that we offer, 27 advanced placement AP courses, 19 career education programs, and two credentialing program, career credentialing programs through our compact, not only at Centerville High School, but our partnership with Kettering and Oakwood City Schools. We work regularly with our local colleges and universities and our industry leaders to look at potential opportunities and programs to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our workforce. Additional funding, this is, really goes to the 0.5 additional PI for facilities. It will look at, help us to implement facility maintenance and renovation projects throughout the district. The district has 15 facilities, about 1.3 million square feet in space. The average age of our buildings now is about 59 years in age, and with Magzic we've talked about is turning 100 years old. But to really kind of focus But to really kind of focus on some of the PI projects, I just want to share some specific items, uh, for everyone. Uh, and that is in no particular order to my list, but a lot of projects that we've talked about, we know that need to be completed, was all part of our facility assessment that we conducted a couple of years ago, and which we have those costs, uh, for our projects, and kind of outlines a plan for us for our facilities. Uh, one is to continue to renovate and update restrooms, uh, to make restrooms accessible across the district. Uh, that also includes our athletic facilities. Just estimates for single restrooms, like here at the high school, for staff, uh, to update and to make those, uh, areas handicap accessible is about ninety thousand dollars just for those six areas. And it's not looking at areas for students. Those are just, uh, staff restrooms. Uh, HVAC ductwork and airflow project in the South Unit. Uh, we heard a little bit about air conditioning and airflow, uh, this, this evening. Uh, you'll recall back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, we had a large HVAC project here in the district in which we replaced a lot of collapsed duct in East and West Unit. Uh, when we were in replacing grid in the ceiling, we also replaced LED lighting. Uh, that was a project that concentrated basically on East and West. Uh, we knew at some time we would have to get to the South Unit, uh, so we're working on plans to, um, how we can implement that same particular project here in the South Unit, uh, to better ma- make that duct work better, and looking at estimated cost for that to be about, uh, one million dollars. We've talked a lot over the last couple of years about electricity here at the high school. Uh, we have plans in place to add electrical panel and replace power lines here at CHS specifically for the East, West, and Central Unit. You'll remember, I remember it really well, it was in twenty sixteen, we replaced the South Line as my first year as the business manager. Uh, the South Unit power line went out. Uh, Mr. Kogle took over his, his first year as a business manager, and we had the line that went out to the football stadium. So, uh, we, we need to replace those two lines or are not replacing our business managers in the near future. So, um, but anyhow, we, it's the projects that we need to continue to look at and focus on, uh, moving forward. We've also replaced several boilers across the district. Uh, we still have a need to replace boilers. Uh, we have boilers that were installed in the mid to late nineties, uh, specifically at Norma- Normity and Driscoll, and here at the high school. Uh, we have a road project that's talked a little bit about, our partnership with the city, that will create some traffic flow scenarios and changes, uh, much-needed changes that'll have to take place on our side, uh, of the parking lot, and we're looking to address those as early as next summer, hoping that before the following summer of twenty twenty-five, we'll have the roadway completed and anticipating that work to be done, uh, next summer. Roof replacement projects, uh, as part of the facilities assessment, we have roof replacement needs at Normity and Primary Village North. Again, an estimated project of about one-point-five-million dollars. And we've talked about Magzic a lot. Uh, we have HVAC concerns there, uh, estimates between four and four-point-five-million dollars, as well as some other things about accessibility, uh, for that building. So, um, we kind of look at the beginning projects, but I think it's also important to look at the tail end of this levy and, and the PI that we've talked about would try to get us to the next four to five years. Uh, we get to the next four to five years, some of our original HVAC units that were installed in the early two thousands will be twenty-four to twenty-five years old. So, um, the additional PI funding will help us to be able to be prepared and ready for when that time comes, uh, in the next four to five years for those projects. So, I went through the list quickly, um, but keep in mind, those were facility-based projects, and that really doesn't address equipment needs, busing needs that we'll continue to have to have in the future, utility vehi- vehicle needs that we'll continue to have in the future, uh, as well as transportation vans and things like that. So, again, all that will be used and be helpful, um, the additional PI for those projects moving forward. That concludes my presentation, unless there's questions from the board.
Good evening. Um, we are excited and happy to share with you the results from this, this year's state report card. Um, we think this, um, is a kind of evidence of the hard work that our students, our teachers, and our staff have put in, also the partnership with the community and our parents. Um, all of those things go into, um, achieving some of these results. And so, um, we're going to walk through what that is, what, some of those pieces today.
And, um, our intention is to be, um, brief, thorough, but brief. And if you have any questions, uh, the state has done a great job of providing resources for anyone in the public to explore the, the report cards. You can go to the state report card site, and then, just slightly below, this is a slight change from in the past. Uh, you have to scroll down a little bit, and you can get to the report card overview, um, on the page.
And so, just, um, so that you're aware, every year there are some changes and adaptations to the report card. Um, what is new this year is the overall star rating, and so, um, last year we had ratings in the components, but not the overall. Um, there also is always a change to the max score on the performance index. That is, um, a, a, the top ten average instead of a standard number. Um, there also are always changes to the gap closing. We're always working at closing that gap, and so those go increase each year. Um, there are some things that are included, um, like the chronic absenteeism measure, and also, the progress component now has two years' worth of data. And so, those are just some of the highlights, um, as we look at the report card.
So, we definitely want to, and I know Mr. Wesney already presented this, but we do want to start off by, um, celebrating the work that, that, um, our teachers, our, our administrators, our community, our parents, every, all the work that everyone did that went into this. You know, I, I sometimes think, um, that we are, you know, although Ms. Calpe and I are up here sharing this, we're kind of conductors of an orchestra that has a, a lot of really phenomenal musicians, right? And so, although we get to, you know, help organize things, we have a number of people that are, are making, um, it happen, and, and we, we need to celebrate that on a number of levels. So, we wanted to say thank you, uh, out of the gates, and we'll circle back to that, but a lot of people's work went into making this happen.
And so, as we work through this, um, the overall rating, which is that five stars, is fed by different components, which underneath those components, there are various measures. There also are lots and lots of data pieces that are shared for information purposes only. So, as you dig in, there's lots more information that doesn't necessarily factor into the ratings, but just gives more, um, details behind those pieces. And so, um, this is the overall, um, report card with all the different components. And so, what we're going to do tonight is work through each of those different components and share it with you a little bit about what that's measuring, how it works, and how we did.
And so, again, the five-star rating is, is, um, you add up all of the components. Achievement is the first one that we're going to look at, that's a four-star. And achievement, I guess the most important thing to note about achievement is this is solely based on those, um, spring Ohio State tests and our students' performance on that. And so, um, over the years, there've been some slight changes to this, uh, and really has focused on what is called the performance index. And just to make that simple and to move forward, uh, performance index is a little different way, is where achievement used to be whether students were making proficiency. Now, um, the state is focusing on, not only are they, are students being proficient, but what degree, what degree are they, um, being proficient? And so, uh, if you were to look at this data pretty closely, we're excited that, um, uh, nearly fifty, over fifty percent of our students are, are in this advanced accelerated, advanced-plus categories, um, which we're excited about. Not only are our students proficient, but, um, are, are excelling. And, you know, as a district, we're getting credit for that on the report card.
So, the next area is progress. And another thing to just note, again, most of the measures on the report card are based off of those spring Ohio State tests. So, this is another one. Um, this one is looking at how kids, students do one year compared to how they do the next year, and did they show like a year's worth of growth on that? Um, another thing to note is we actually don't have access to any of the data behind this measure, um, because the value-added reports aren't released to teachers and the district until Oc- October eighteenth. And so, this was the first glance we saw at that progress. And you'll, it, also note that the dark blue color is that highest level that you can score on this. And so, you see a lot of dark blue, you also see some red and some green and some, some areas that we, we need to dig into and look at. And so, that is the progress component.
Gap closing is, uh, there's a number of components that go into gap closing. We're going to highlight the, the three, the main ones. But gap closing is basically, um, the state's attempt to kind of look at your, your practice, practices from an equity lens, like how well you're meeting the needs of different subgroups of students. So, the first piece that we're going to look at is, um, and these are categories that the state breaks out students, uh, breaks students into. This is a measure of how well are we meeting the needs of students in these different subgroups? So, on the screen right now, our ELA scores and our math achievement scores, and then each color bar is a different group of students. The red dot on there is the target that the state has established for our schools, um, a- a- as, as a target mark. And as you can see, we have met or exceeded those in every one of those categories. There are some demographic, um, different demographic groups, everything from, uh, different, uh, race codes to, um, students with special needs, and you'll see there.
Another component that was within the gap closing is our gifted, the gifted measures. And so, what is important to note is that our gifted students met both progress and the performance index. Um, so, progress means those gifted kiddos who scored very high last year continue to score high or higher than they did comparatively. Um, same thing with the performance index. If you'll notice, the max performance index was like one-twenty, you can see that there on the screen. We, we're at like ninety-eight percent of that. So, our gifted students not only grew, but also performed very well on those end of, those end-of-course and OST tests, um, in the spring.
Just, uh, again, and I think Mr. Wesney highlighted this, you know, uh, roughly in, in K through twelve, thirty percent of our students are identified in some area of giftedness. And, um, we have a limited number of gifted intervention specialists that work with that large part of our, our population. But it just goes to show, I think, how, um, we utilize our resources and utilize those specialists to work with. There's no way we accomplish this if those gifted intervention specialists, the seven of them, the eight of them that we have, for, for, uh, a third of our students, s- second grade through twelve, if, if they're not helping support our regular ed teachers and, um, you know, supplying that, that, those extra, um, services for those students. So, uh, that's a place where, you know, we operate pretty thin, but the people who are doing the work do a fantastic job, and our teachers work really well with their colleagues in that, um, capacity.
Another area in the gap closing is chronic absenteeism. Um, this is, uh, detailed as missing ten percent or more of more of a school year, and that equates to just about eighteen days. Actually, um, Ms. Mrup and Ms. Furby, Furbay are going to talk a little bit more about chronic absenteeism in their presentation.
The next component is graduation. And really, it's important to understand that there are really only two component, or two pieces that go into the graduation component. That's the four-year graduation cohort and the five-year. So, um, just to simply say this, uh, graduate, this report card is always a year behind. So, what we're seeing here is, although we just graduated the class of twenty-twenty-three, this is actually, uh, information about the class of twenty-two. Okay? So, we had, uh, roughly ninety-six percent graduate. Um, you can see, we have breakdown of the different subgroups. Um, and, and one of the things that when we get this information and we're sifting through it, uh, graduation is clearly a, a, a major, uh, goal of ours with all of our students. And so, when we don't graduate students, we want to make sure that we dig into what happened there. And so, I just want to share really briefly, like where are those, that, that kind of four-ish percent? When we look at our twenty-twenty-two cohort, and that, and when we say twenty-twenty-two cohort, that is the students who should have graduated in twenty-twenty-two based on when they entered high school. So, when you enter high school, time starts ticking, and you get four years to graduate, and the state views, uh, that cohort altogether. No matter what we call them at different points, the state believes that all of those students that enter that freshman year get four years to graduate. Um, when we did a little deeper dive into this, it's just important to understand, there are some rules at the state, there's some reporting. Sometimes it's a little out of our hands. So, we know that nineteen students out of that cohort left us at some point during their high school career. That could have been their freshman year, after they stepped foot on here. And so long as, i- if that student leaves the country or goes to maybe a, a private institution that does not have the same reporting requirements that, that public institutions have, uh, they end up remaining our responsibility until the, the end of those four years. So, there's a good chance that nineteen of these students may have, some of them may have, uh, attended other schools and graduated just through the reporting system, it wasn't communicated to us. And so, long as they aren't reporting, uh, registering in a new school, maybe they're, they're, stay on kind of the books for us. Um, the other group that I, I just want to point out before we go is, we have a number of students, nine in that cohort, that are students with, um, significant special needs. Uh, often, if you've heard of our ITOPS program, our students who, um, are past their twelfth-grade year at Centerville High School, but elect to go work at Bethany Village, uh, to support. These are students who have significant special needs, but elect to not receive their diploma so that they can continue in that program. It's a necessary condition for that program. So, we believe that's an important, um, program for those students and is building, um, skills for their, uh, post-secondary lives. And so, uh, every year we have about nine, ten, somewhere between probably seven and ten students who decline their diploma so they can stay in there. And those count against us in this metric, and, and we have to understand that, you know, that's probably in the best interest of those students, and it's not a reason to, uh, graduate them. So, you know, there are some different factors in, in those numbers that I wanted to clarify. Uh, we did have six students in that, who, uh, cohort, who have graduated. Those students factor into that fifth-year cohort, um, and we'll see those numbers show up next year, so.
Just want to clarify one thing. The nineteen students that we were talking about that left the district, you said that we're responsible for them. The responsibility is that we just need to make sure that they graduated somewhere. We're not responsible, we're responsible for reporting it to the state.
Yeah, in the eyes of the state, they stay connected to Centerville High School.
From a reporting standpoint.
From a reporting standpoint.
Right.
And until they enroll in another school and are reported by that other school.
Right.
Yeah, there are, there are issues sometimes.
Right.
Um, the next measure is early literacy, and this, this actually has three different, um, pieces to make up that component. And so, the first one is proficiency in third-grade reading. Again, this is a, from the third, the spring third-grade reading OST. And this rate of eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six point, I can't read it from here, but it is the highest one that we've ever seen. I've looked back more than ten years, and there's not a number that is this high. And so, that is definitely something to celebrate, um, and the hard work that's gone into kindergarten, first, second, and third grade and getting the students to be, um, above proficient and, and, and excel at that. Um, the next layer of that measure is promotion to fourth grade. Again, the House bill that passed in the summer, the budget bill, put all the students into fourth grade, and so every district has a hundred percent there, and so that's where that is. And then, the improving K-three literacy is a measure of, every fall, we give a diagnostic assessment that tells if a child is on track or not on track. What this is a measure is how many kids from fall of one year to fall of the next year are we getting from not on track to on track? And so, those three components make up that early literacy measure.
And lastly, this is just, uh, this is on the report card page. We felt like, uh, we needed to address it, but the college, career, workforce, military readiness is a component that's not official, and the, the data is actually incomplete. But it is on there, but that will be official this time next year. Uh, we'll be talking about some of the first measures for that. And just as a reminder, the college, career, workforce, military, uh, readiness component is looking at what percent of your senior class, um, was able to achieve of one of these many options during their time at, um, in high school. So, um, we are regularly, and I think we've, we've alluded to this a number of times, we're, we're looking at different ways to, um, help our students achieve those. Uh, one of those are multiple, um, opportunities to show that readiness. That will be live next year, and we'll have some real information, and complete information on the report card. As of now, it's one of those report-only situations and not factoring.
And so, that is just a brief recap, recap of the different areas and measures that go into, um, the state report card. Um, again, lots of things to celebrate, but plenty of areas that we are continuing to work on. We have actually had access to the data that is behind this since May, and so we've been able to be planning and analyzing that and using that with teachers and staff to be already on the task of, of a continuous improvement as we head into this year.
You know, one of the things people talk about is, is the catch-up from pre-COVID, COVID and post-COVID. Can you address how we're doing on that?
So, in, in most areas, we are at or above where we were pre-COVID. There's a few places where we still lag behind and are continuing to intervene and provide, um, support to students in those areas.
We want to continue to provide that intervention and that support as long as necessary.
Yes, we provided intervention and support prior to COVID.
Right.
Um, we've just had to increase that a bit because there were more, more students that were requiring that kind of, that kind of re- re- reteaching and, and support.
Some of the federal funding was-
Some of the federal funding was not went to that project.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's been, you know, we've been able to, over the last few years, continue to look at different ways of technology and, and real-time ways to monitor our students. So better than pre-COVID, we, we are monitoring students in more real time and being able to intervene as a result.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone, everyone. Next, Tammy and Becky.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for letting us talk to you tonight. So we're going to talk a little bit about Proving Ground, which is going to be our district attendance initiative. So there's a little bit of a question about why is attendance so important? Mr. Terrello and Mrs. Colapi just spoke about the fact of how well our students are achieving across the district. And there is a direct correlation in between students' attendance and how they do in their academic success. So we have always, as, as school districts, we have always had to look at our average daily attendance, at least always being at least 10 years, the past 10, actually longer than that, years, we've had to look at our average daily attendance. What has actually happened recently as a result, potentially a result of the pandemic, is that across the state of Ohio, attendance patterns changed. So those attendance patterns actually didn't change for the better, they changed for the worse. And so Ohio started looking at this and realizing that it's not just the average daily attendance that is a problem, but is actually chronic absenteeism. And that's because chronic absenteeism is only missing 10%, and you say only missing 10% of the days, but that's missing two to maybe four days a month during the school year. So most people, and those are usually not consecutive days, would think, well, you know, I was sick two days in August, and then I was sick two days in September, and not think too much about it, but those days start to add up, which will get us to our 10%. Ohio is really, they're focusing on that early intervention. So up here, I just have a graphic that, we have a graphic that's really explaining, you know, we looked at average daily attendance. We have been looking at truancy there. House Bill 410 addresses truancy, and so we have some mandates in place for us for students that are truant. And truant is actually missing 72 unexcused hours of absenteeism. So it's hours, not days. You know, we switched over, it makes it a little harder sometimes because we have to think about that. So if I'm 15 minutes late, and I'm 15 minutes late, and I'm 15 minutes late, all of those add up. When I hit that 72 hours, I have hit a truancy mark. The chronic absenteeism, though, again, is looking at missing 18 days in a school year, which is 10% of our school year.
I can't read that from here. And you all, we've printed some slides for you that are data slides so that you can see a little bit more, a little bit clearer the data that we have.
So what we have put up here is actually our average daily attendance rates for the 22, 23 school year. So that would be last year. And then our chronic absenteeism rates for also the 22, 23 school year. The reason we are showing this is because you'll see, like, if you're just looking at the average daily attendance rate, if you're looking at that, it's like 93 point, I can't.
Eight.
Eight.
I can't read it.
So really, when you would think about that, that's, that seems like pretty good attendance, right? But then when you switch over to the chronic absenteeism, when you start looking at some of our subgroups that are there, like our economically disadvantaged students, you'll see that their percentage rate is more up towards 30% of the chronic absenteeism. Our students with disabilities, we have the same thing, they have a higher absenteeism rate, along with our minority students have a higher absenteeism, which is that chronic absenteeism piece. So we're really just trying to show why it's important to look at both measures and not just one measure, because when you get into the chronic absenteeism, we're going to see some different things.
So what does our data look like? So this shows a trend, and we're going to look at some data that shows a five-year trend for, for various things. So this is just a quick, easy graphic to show you that since 2019, what Centerville's chronic absenteeism has, has been. And so Centerville is a little different than most districts because most districts saw a significant increase in chronic absenteeism in 2020 and 2021. Centerville spiked in 2022, which is pretty opposite of the majority of the districts in the state of Ohio. The good news is, is it is starting to trend back down. And what you can see is we're about 16% chronic absenteeism for 2022, and that equates to about just over 1,200 students. I'm going to show you a little later that that's actually more students, and I'll explain the difference in there. So we wanted to show you that. And then we're able to pull various data points when we look at trends in chronic absenteeism. So I just pulled one example for you, just looking at race. So again, this is a five-year look, and it is breaking us, our students into six of our subgroups. This, there's more to this because if you look at the 21, 22 school year, we've got 75% chronic absenteeism with our American Indian and Alaskan Native. But I wanted to show you this when it looked like in actual numbers. So the next slide, we took this data and we put it into table form to show you exact student numbers. So if you look at the very first table in the top left, where our 75% for that subgroup of students was chronically absent, we only have four students in that group. So three out of four of our students were chronically absent. So it, that, the table looks a little skewed from the data, but these are our subgroups in the district. And you can see then the trend for the chronic absenteeism for each of these subgroups. And this is a lot of the data that we are going to be using as we look forward to do the work that we're going to do with Proving Ground.
Before you go on, just, because I know, I think we talked about this a little bit last time, chronic absenteeism.
Yeah.
How do you define that? Like, if they come a half hour late to school, they're chronically absent?
Not necessarily.
By, by, and the hours, if they add the hours.
Correct. So I'll give you a really simple example. So if we look at a week, and so a student enrolled and their first day was on Monday, and on Friday, we look at their absenteeism, their chronic absenteeism, if they were, if they did not come to school on three of those days, that calculation is pretty easy. They were absent.
Right.
For 60%, so they're chronically absent. But then as the year goes, their, that individual student's chronic absenteeism rate will change based on the number of times they came to school on time. So the difference between that previous slide, one of those previous slides with the average daily attendance, that student, if they came to school a half an hour late.
Right.
They're counted as a full day of attendance.
Right.
Which is where that 93, almost 94% of average daily attendance, the attendance rates are. So that doesn't count against a student's chronic absenteeism in terms of their, they were counted in school as attending that day, but it will count as those minutes add up.
Right. And that was my point, that you can have someone that comes a half hour every day, those half hours add up, but if he's there every day and a half hour late, their attendance rate is 100%.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
So attendance rate and absenteeism are really not tied together.
Correct.
By, by coming late.
And your attendance rate can hide your chronic absenteeism.
Correct.
So your attendance rate, it, it often, your chronic absenteeism gets lost in your attendance rate.
Right. I mean, you could have 100% attendance rate and an 80% chronic absenteeism.
Absolutely.
So, yeah. All right.
Okay, so these, I wanted to pull out a little bit of data for you that is somewhat alarming. So total for last school year, there were 1,357 students that were chronically absent. You'll notice that this number is different than the, the total number of students that was on that first graph with the blue, and that is because that chronic absenteeism rate calculates for a total full-time equivalent of a student. So for example, if TME, she came to school, she enrolled in school the first month of school, she is not considered a, a one full-time equivalent student. Let's say then, then I enrolled, and I'm only here for the last quarter of the year. Together, we are one FTE. So it looks at two students as one if they weren't a full-year student. So that number is based on that. This is the total number of students that were chronically absent, based on whenever they enrolled in the school district last school year. So our chronic absenteeism rate last year ranged from 10% all the way up to 77.4%. So we have a student that was absent and was only here for, was that 22.6% of the school year, which is, it's somewhat alarming. So then the state has four different categories of, of chronic absenteeism, and so the top two tiers are moderate, and those are students that are chronically absent between 10 and 20% of the year. So we had 1,121 students in that category, and then we had 236, which were in the severe range. So this is chronic absenteeism that is greater than or equal to 20.1%. So that's a lot of students. So although our, our chronic absenteeism percentage was 16%, when you look at individual students, that is a lot of students that are, their achievement is being impacted by their, their absenteeism rates.
How does home instruction factor into this? Because they're being, they're receiving instruction from the district, but they're not physically in the building.
Those students, I don't believe, are calculated in our chronic absenteeism rate because they are, they're considered home instruction, so they're, they're receiving their education outside of the district, so they don't count in our per seat.
So they're not counting them, so.
Correct, no, correct.
And, and again, the, the chronic absenteeism, they are excused, if they come in with an excused absence, that goes in here. So if, if they're sick, they go to the doctor's office, they come in an hour late, that counts against them.
Yes, right.
So you may have a true illness and be sick, but it counts against you.
Right. And that's where some of our work is going to be, students that have a medical need, that truly have something that is causing them from being here because of medical safety and medical need, and intervention for that student is going to look drastically different from a student that is being suspended for multiple times or that's coming, that is tardy to school on a consistent basis.
Are you able to break down in the data how many are excused versus unexcused?
We can.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Be interesting to see.
And really, when they put in, when our secretaries put in reasons, like they, they code them, so we can pull all of that data that will tell us because we use consistent codes, which helps, you know, some of it, sometimes while it helps, it hurts to look at it and see what the reason is, but, you know. And we have some legit reasons for not being here. I mean, you know, we have had, we have kids that have significant illnesses, and they attend school when they are able to attend school. And so, you know, we're just thankful that they're able to attend on the days they're able to attend, but that all plays still into a factor and would be pulled with our data.
If that's, if that student's out for an illness and we provide home instruction, how does that count?
Well, it really depends on how we code them. So if we're coding them, they can't be coded as both. So they either have to be here or they have to be on home instruction. But if we give them supplemental home instruction, then they're not counting in that. Although if, if they're getting home instruction and they live multiple times that are scheduled times, then we address the attendance piece with them also because it's still important for them to get, you know, whatever education we can get them. Understanding, of course, you know, hospital stays, there's other things that occur, and that's an understandable reason. But we still want to make sure that they get what they need.
So all of this, we give you all of this data to really introduce to you as the board, to our staff, to our community. We are now part of what is called the Ohio Attendance Improvement Network. This was an opportunity, we were actually invited to apply to be in this network. So this is a network that is funded through a grant with the Ohio Department of Education, and it's a partner with the Ohio Department of Education, the Stay in the Game Campaign, which is, our support organization will be the Columbus Crew, and Harvard University's Proving Ground. And so what this is, is it is, if you want to go to the next. So we are in what is considered Cohort Two. Last year, this work started, and it was Cohort One, and it actually was four districts last year, but Canton was not able to continue the work for the year, so they backed out and delayed to be with us in Cohort Two. I think one of the interesting things when you look at the districts in Cohort One and Cohort Two, we are a complete outlier from where the work is focused. Which I think is pretty exciting. Also, if you know anything about those other districts, those are, the majority of those districts are what are considered to be the 11 districts that have a, an ODE focus for, it started with students with disabilities, but it has become much larger, larger. So the majority of those districts, Centerville and Berea are the only districts that are not in the 11, one of the 11 districts that ODE is focusing some work on. Our demographics are different than all of these other districts, our achievement is district, different from all these other districts. So we're really excited because they really did ask us to apply. We weren't sure if we were going to be accepted into the second cohort, but we, we make some assumptions about why they chose our district, so we're really excited. Either way, we're excited about the work.
It's a great opportunity for us. So, you know, it's going to allow us to collaborate with a lot of the other school districts and get some additional support in doing deeper dives into our data, which is the same stuff our curriculum department has also been doing. So as a team, we'll be taking some deeper dives into our attendance and what that is looking like.
So this is, for the network, these are essentially goals, and it really is about helping us go through things that we already know how to do, but it is at a deeper level. So we're going to look at continuous improvement cycles, and this pressing issue for us is attendance. The, the network is attendance. And then we are going, they're going to work with us to build these rigorous improvement, the capacity for us for continuous improvement, and then we're going to do that independently. So they're going to walk us through a really deep, intense process, really looking at overall systemic improvement. So on the next slide, this is just a quick look at what the year is going to look like. So we are in year one of a two-year cohort, and this is what's going to happen. We've already had the kickoff meeting, we had that last week, and then our first meeting will be in October, and they walk us through a very systematic process to look at our data. We have some data in, that's due early December, and it really is taking a look at that, all of those different pieces of data, so that we can come up with. of those different pieces of data, so that we can come up with some root causes as to why our chronic absenteeism is the way that it is. And then the ultimate goal by the end of this school year is for our team to come up with some sort of a pilot to implement the study this year to see what gains we can make in reducing our chronic absenteeism. One of the things that has come out of Proving Ground work from the last several years is, they're called personalized postcards, that teachers, there's all kinds of data and research behind it, that if, if teachers can write a postcard to a student that has, that is struggling with, with attendance, it is markedly, markedly improves a student's attendance. Just a, a postcard that they send out in the mail. So those are the things that we're, they're going to be helping us to design. We're going to go through a really deep root cause. It's just really important work, important work. And here is the essence of it. So it's the continuous improvement cycle. So we're starting the work on looking at attendance, but it is much, much bigger than that. Once we get through attendance, this work is going to allow us to replicate this cycle of continuous improvement for everything that we do in the district. So we're really excited about it. And then, so what's the catch? Harvard University, how much is it going to cost the district? Not a single penny. It is a grant that is completely funded through ODE, and that's why there's only four districts in a cohort, because it's only enough funding for four districts. So we are, we are thrilled and honored to be one of the districts in this, in this cohort. So any additional questions?
Yeah, it's great.
Exciting.
It is exciting.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the August 23 financial statements, monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by the board resolution totaling $26,256.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Next, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, August 28th and September 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Consider approving the FY '24 Permanent Appropriations by Fund totaling $168,073,242.
So moved.
Second.
Want to explain that real quickly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have to, by September 30th, approve our permanent appropriations. This is for all funds, not just the general fund. We talked tonight just about the general fund. This is grants, it's permanent improvement, it's our bond fund, it's, it's everything, it's all of our funds that we do, all of our student activity funds and so on. And so this is an audit requirement that I will submit to the county auditor for our spending authority for the year.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Next, superintendent recommendations. Recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C, for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments, and recommending, recommends the grant, granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Next, consider approving the following transportation items. The acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 23-24 school year from the districts and for the students listed.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Next, any final comments with Pastor O Business from the Board of Education?
A couple.
All right.
Last week, I made a comment about the universal voucher program that the House and Senate passed and the governor signed, allowing voucher programs to anybody that goes to any type of a private school who makes less than 450% of poverty level. Last week, right before our meeting, the Ohio School Board Association reported there were over 70,000 parents that requested that funding. They said they were getting 1,000 requests per day. Based upon the statutory language, a child can get up to $8,000 for high school, correct me if I'm wrong, or about $8,000. And if they're in a elementary or a middle school, it's around $7,000 per child. If you make more than 450% of the poverty level, you can still get money, it's just the amount is reduced. So if they're only getting $5,000 or $6,000 per child, and there's 70,000 of them, that's $350 million, up to $420 million of our taxpayer money going to fund private schools. Now, I don't have a problem if the citizens of this state want to support private schools in any fashion. However, my concern is, our district gets less than $2,000 per student coming to the school. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Dernbaugh?
That's correct.
So in order to go to these, our school, we only get less than $2,000, we're giving private schools $7,000 to $8,000 per child. I think it's unfair that the state has decided to treat public schools much differently than they treat private schools. So think about, we're talking about what's going on with levies and paying taxes, that our legislature has made a distinct decision to fund private schools much greater than they fund public schools.
All right. Seeing nothing else, I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
I'll say him then.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes. Thank you all for coming.